And start. The zoning board review meeting for October 15th is now in session. I'd like to take a roll call to see who's present for meeting and seated on the board. You have in council chambers Ben Farrell. Ben Farrell, John Borden is acting as chairman. Or Jim Knott, unable to attend this evening. Can I hear your other zoning board members, please state your name.
Bill Wadika on present?
Bill Wadika present?
Kathy Pavlak is present.
Kathy Pavlak is present.
Sue Hawitz present.
Okay. I believe that's our meeting. We have a quorum with five members. Two members, Mr. Repose and Mr. Knott are unable to attend. So first order of business is minutes. We have minutes from. We have minutes from. May 21st, May 28th, and June 18th. As everyone read the minutes, there is their motion to approve the minutes for those three meetings. May 21st, May 28th, and June 18th.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st, May 28th, and June 18th.
Okay, all those in favor, please state your name as you're approving the minutes. John Borden approves all three minutes.
Kathleen Pavlak is approves.
Sue Hawitz approves.
Bill Wadika approve.
Okay, Ben Farrell approves. Ben Farrell approves the meetings for May 21st, May 28th, and June 18th. Have been approved as written. Okay, actually, that's a really good point. Was there a second to that motion? Just the housekeeping issue with one of the members like.
Second motion, Kathy speaking.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded and everyone's voted to approve the minutes are approved. First item on the agenda is old business petition by Michael and Karen Mulligan. Dimensional variance for rear yard shed replacement requirement for the construction of an eight by eight storage shed at 58 Millway. Are the Mulligans present? We're gonna wait a minute for our assistant planner to return. To see if the Mulligans are online. Bear with us for a moment. Mr. Assistant Planner, are the Mulligans online?
Hello, can you hear us?
Yes, is this Michael and Karen?
Yep.
Yes, it is.
All right. Thank you, so unfortunately, the zoning board only has five members this evening, which is a quorum. However, John Borden, I'm the vice chairman, and the chairman is absent this evening. And I live across the street from you at 41 Millway. So I cannot legally sit on this petition because I'm in a butter. Even though I support your petition, quite honestly, but that being said, we have no choice but to continue your petition till next month's hearing.
That's fine.
Is there a motion from a board member to continue this petition for our November meeting?
Ben Farrell moves the petition of Michael and Karen Mulligan to be moved to be regularly scheduled November 2020.
There is a second.
Kathleen Pavlak is second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, your petition has been continued to our November meeting. I apologize for the inconvenience, thank you.
That's fine.
No problem.
Next petition on the agenda is. John J. and Elena Massa, dimensional variance for lot coverage. Dr. Garage located at 35 Rhode Island Boulevard. Are they present?
Yep, they should be on there.
Hello, is. John J. and Elena Massa present?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
Charlie Good.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for the record?
John J. Massa, 35 Rhode Island Boulevard, Portsmouth, Rhode Island.
And could you raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
I am looking for relief for accessory use garage added to my existing house. At 35 Rhode Island Boulevard in Common Fence Point. I have. Exceeded the. The allowance, coverage allowance by 0.6%, so basically 1%. And at that, I had to decrease the size of the garage to 17 feet, six inches in width. The reason for this is that my house currently has no attic and no basement. We have a crawl space that nothing lasts more than a few months. We need, we need storage, we need dry storage, Christmas decorations, deck furniture, lawn mowers, snow blower. Change of season clothing, et cetera, et cetera. The second floor will be, first floor will be used primarily for vehicles. Second floor will be used for the dry storage. There's no water or electricity going into the garage. And the second floor only has a height of six feet.
Okay, thank you. Are there any board members that have any questions? The chairman had a question regarding whether or not you've had a basement or an attic. And you've answered that question, you do not.
I believe so.
So. I'll ask the board members one more time, and then I think we're gonna go to the butters. The butters are interested parties?
Incidentally, I've provided you with a letter from my director butter in approval of my petition.
Okay. Mr. Farrell, is that in the record? I don't see it. We don't see your letter, but we'll ask for butters and interested parties right now that would like to speak to the petition. Mister. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, please raise your hand. I don't see any. Okay, that being said. There are no butters that wish to speak, board members don't have any questions. Petitioner in an R10 zone has a lot. 10,800 square feet, which does not require the special use permit for substandard lot of record. The. Lead being sought is 0.6% of lot coverage. And it's dimensional variance. Mister Farrell?
Before we get to working, Mr. Chairman, I do have a letter.
Okay, we have the letter from you butter. Mister Farrell?
Letter is from Edward F. Gidlin, 27 Rhode Island Avenue Boulevard. Question for I, to whom may I turn? Upon review of the plans, drawings, and specs, please consider this letter by confirmation and approval of the proposed construction of a 17 foot, six inch, and 23 foot, zero inch garage to be rented on the adjacent property. Currently owned and occupied by J. and Elena Massa. Is 35 Rhode Island Boulevard, those premises.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we're ready to vote. Mister Farrell?
Mister Chairman, I vote to approve the petition. A garage is a typical accessory use and is common in this neighborhood. With the absence of other dry storage, to deny this petition would amount to more than a mere inconvenience.
Ms. Horowitz?
I approve this application for reasons previously stated.
Mister Wadika?
I approve the application for reasons previously stated.
Mister Pavlakis?
I also approve the application for reasons previously stated.
Chairman also votes to approve, a garage is a reasonable request. Yes, no basement, no attic. Storage is a reasonable request. Petitioner has demonstrated a hardship abiding to more than a mere inconvenience, I vote to approve. Your petition has been approved unanimously.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, good luck with your project.
Thank you.
The next petition on the agenda is by Michael and Lorian Sarrow. Dimensional variances for lot coverage and front yard setback. Special use permit to construct a, an eight by 22 front porch, not conforming a lot of record. At 47 Allen Avenue. Are the Sarrows present? We might get out of here at 7:30. I'll be kidding.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay, please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Sorrow, 47 Allen Ave.
Okay, and please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Okay, thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
I just want to, right now, I currently have a small front porch, pretty much just a little scoop. And I just want to extend it out just for a place to sit out. My yard really isn't set up all that good for an outdoor space to sit in. And I just want to extend my front porch, so it's an area that we can put chairs out on and sit out on and enjoy the yard a little bit.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Mister Farrell? Mister Sorrow?
Yes.
For your proposed porch, it will extend from your home eight feet?
Yes.
And can, and you currently have a deck, what you described is the, you know, the current little step deck.
Yeah.
How, about how far does that extend from your home?
From, from the house to the end of the steps is eight feet. The porch that I'll be putting in will be going as far as the steps go right now.
Okay, so, so you're not approaching on the property line any further than you're doing now? You're just extending it, it looks like you're extending it sort of towards your picket fence.
Exactly, yeah, the, the front of the porch won't go any further than the steps currently sit right now. And the steps that we'll be putting in will be to the side, so it won't go any further out than it currently is.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
So John Borden, chairman, has a question. So you're seeking a 10-foot variance, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you do have two front yards, if you will? You butted President Avenue and Allen Avenue?
Yeah, it's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot, correct. And that distance is the distance to the property line, not to the street, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, so in, in actuality, there's more distance from your property line to the street.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board members? Okay, butters and interested parties? There are any butters that wish to comment, please raise your hand through the Zoom app or dial star nine on the phone. There are no butters, I, Sarah, I do have to ask you a couple of questions because your. One district, but I think it's.
Yeah, see one.
Really, that's commercial.
Yep.
Substandard lot of records still applies, correct? That was used, okay, so because your lot is.
Yeah, the way it was explained to me was that it was, the lot was done before the zoning laws, so it's down as commercial and residential?
Okay, so I just want, need to ask you a couple of questions in regards to a substandard lot of record. If this were approved, is there adequate space for fire protection?
For what?
In other words, if your petition was approved, is there adequate space in the side and rear yards for fire equipment to get to your property?
Yes.
Okay, and is there adequate light and air between the buildings?
I'm sorry, adequate what?
Light and air between the buildings?
Yes.
Okay, and if this petition were approved, would it alter the character of the neighborhood?
No, 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 not at all. Two of my neighbors have pretty much the same thing that I'm looking to do.
Okay, with the lot coverage and setbacks, less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties? And the answer is no.
No.
Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or immediate neighbors?
No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so. Board members, Michael Sarrow is petition, is petitioning for a. 10-foot front yard variance. For the purposes of constructing a front porch, Mister Farrell?
The reasonable request allowing the applicant full enjoyment and use of their property. I just request for the very convenience.
Mister Pavlakis?
I concur with Ben Farrell, and I approve.
Horowitz?
I approve this application based on reasons previously stated.
Mister Wadika?
I approve for the reasons previously stated.
Chairman also votes to approve about a front porch is a reasonable request. Right now, he doesn't have a place really to sit out and enjoy his, his residence. That this will allow him to have chairs and tables and be able to fully enjoy the permitted residential use. Deny it amount to more than a mere inconvenience and hardship. Chairman votes to approve, your petition has been approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Okay, the next petition is by Newport Electric. Corporation. Newport Electric is proposing. To install ground mounted solar array in customer's yard, stuck east corner. Array to be constructed with mini pack rails and tires. Engineered for use, array not to exceed seven feet off grid. Array to be surrounded with landscape and keep it from being seen from the front yard. Is someone from Newport Electric Construction present?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, Mike Sullivan, address is 300 Lafayette Road, North Kingstown.
Okay, can you raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, tell us what you'd like to do.
So I'm representing Bonnie Hole, the homeowner. I'm operations manager over at Newport Electric. We are looking to construct a solar array on the customer's side yard. This array will be approximately 69 feet long and is going to be the same level as an existing fence that it's going to sit against, so about six and a half feet tall. And solar is to offset the customer's electricity usage. And. We're gonna plant, the plan is to plant some shrubs along the side of this solar array to block it from the street and driveway view. There is an existing tree line already on the southern side of the property that borders this property and the neighbor, the butter.
Okay. The chair has a couple of questions before I turn it over to other board members. So this lot is 102,000 square feet, which is roughly 1/2 acres, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so would any of the array be visible to any butters?
It would not be visible due to the existing tree line on that southern property line. Which I believe you can actually see in that aerial photo right there.
Yeah.
It would be, I guess actually it would be slightly visible from the, the very rear of the butters property. But they already have an existing fence along there with some, some low, low trees and shrubs as well.
Okay, so would there be any noise or odors coming from this array? Are you gonna be able to hear this array if you're in a butter?
Nope, there is no sound, no byproducts, no hazardous materials or any, like I said, other byproducts from the solar. It'll just sit there and absorb the sunlight and that's about it.
Other board members, any questions?
I don't have questions.
Yes, Ms. Horowitz?
No, I, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions, okay. If there are no other questions from the board members, are there butters and interested parties that would like to speak? If you're on the phone, dial star nine, and if you're on Zoom app, please use the raise hand function. I don't see any. Hands raised. So, that being said. I just have a quick question for either the assistant planner or a solicitor. In regards to our latest solar ordinance. This appears to be in line with what they are petitioning for, for a ground array. Does a planner or a solicitor have anything they would like to add to this petition that the board should be aware of? In regards to petition versus the zoning ordinance and in regards to what the zoning ordinance. Asked for of the petition.
I, I defer to Mike, I have no issues, this is under, as the chair said, this is petition under our new ordinance and.
Yeah, let me show this is the top player. I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I have reviewed the plans before, looked at the ordinance.
Thank you. I just didn't want to drop the ball or try to get elephant in the room, but here's, so there is no elephant in the room. That being said, there are no butters or interested parties. I'll ask the petitioner, do you have anything you'd like to add before the board votes on your petition?
No, not this time.
Okay. Petitioner is seeking a special use permit to construct a solar array. At 107 Millar Lane. Mister Farrell?
Chairman, Ben Farrell votes to approve this. Solar array is benign from an, from an environmental point of view, as stated by the applicant. It doesn't produce any, any sound, any odors, or any other environmental signature. The site and location of this array means it will not be a nuisance. I note that on, that, that as well as having a few homes, a couple of homes as a butters, there's also a golf course. And then a place like agricultural field. And approval of this petition will allow use of the applicant's property as we. And approval of this petition will allow use of the applicant's property as we should attempt to let them use it. So I approve.
Thank you. Ms. Harrowitz?
I approve for reasons previously stated.
Mr. Wadika?
I approve for reasons previously stated.
Papalakis?
I also approve for reasons previously stated.
Chair also votes to approve. In regards to the special use criterion, this is not gonna create a nuisance or hazard. The petitioner has made sure that there's landscaping, a buffer. Petitioner has two and a half acres and as Mr. Ferrell stated, it's a benign use, no noise, smoke, or odors. I vote to approve the petition. The petition has been approved unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you everybody for your time this evening.
Okay. Next petition on the agenda is Matthew Chase. And 150 Anthony Road LLC seeks a special use permit to expand their non-conforming construction service business by constructing a seventy-by-thirty board structure located at 150-156 Anthony Road. Is Mr. Chase present?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Matthew Chase and addresses 21 Peckham Ave, Newport.
Okay, and can you raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
I would like a permission to put up a thirty-by-seventy temporary building. It's kind of a hoop structure. It takes a big tarp over the top of it, and that structure would allow me to get my construction yard cleaned up. For example, be able to move my staging, my tractor, and some other kind of unsightly stuff. I could put it inside of my, inside of something. So for one, the stuff would be protected and two, it'd be out of sight.
Okay, so my first question, this is the Chair John Gordon, is you mentioned temporary structure.
Yes.
When you say temporary, does that mean that if this were approved at some point, you're gonna take it down? Or do you plan on this being a permanent structure moving forward?
Well, the construction of the structure itself is kind of temporary in nature in that it sits, it has like concrete blocks that just sit on the earth, and those are what kind of hold the hoop in place. And then the the structure of it is just not, there you go, that picture there kind of describes it. The structure of it isn't something like a building that you would have there permanently. It's, I mean, I'm sure it's probably only gonna put up with one or two hurricanes.
Well, let's hope that that doesn't happen.
Right.
So my next question is, right now, everything is outside.
Correct.
It's already existing on your site. You just wanna be able to protect it.
Correct.
And you have a lot of one hundred and one thousand square feet, which is roughly two and a half acres, is that correct?
I believe so. I think it might be a little bit less than that. I'm not sure. I didn't look at the
Okay, and if I understand correctly, you're kind of across from the Portsmouth Roger Williams University site and what used to be the state highway garage?
Correct.
Okay, so other than the golf course, you really don't have any residential butters?
Correct. That is correct, yes.
Okay. Other Board members, questions?
Mr. Chairman Ben Ferrell, I do have a question.
Yes, Mr. Ferrell. Mr. Chase, will the temporary structure be wired for electricity and plumbing or water?
No, neither.
Thank you very much. Other Board members, questions? Okay, there are butters and interested parties. I would like to speak to the petition.
Just a reminder, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand in the Zoom app or if you called in, dial star nine. Raise your hand. I see no hands raised.
Okay. There are no hands raised, and this is our ten zoning district. And because the petitioner is seeking to expand and not conforming use, it's the special use permit criterion versus dimensional variance. So I think the Board is ready to vote. The lot coverage on the petition is nine point five percent, and there are no dimensional relief requirements being sought. Mr. Ferrell?
Mr. Chairman Ben Ferrell, I approve, I vote to approve this petition. The petition allows more efficient use of the applicant's property and protects his valuable business equipment. It's a reasonable request with no impact on the butters.
Thank you. Ms. Papalakis?
I concur with Mr. Ferrell, and I approve.
Ms. Harrowitz?
I approve this application for reasons previously stated.
Mr. Wadika?
I approve this application for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The Chair also votes to approve. This is a reasonable request. There's no impact in regards to special use criterion, noise, smoke, and odors, compatibility with surrounding properties, nuisance or a hazard. This just plain makes sense. All that equipment is already there and placed. Petitioner wants to protect it. It has two and a half acres of land. It's gonna clean up the site. And it just plain makes sense, and it needs the special use permit criterion. Chair votes to approve. Your petition has been approved unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Take care. Okay. The next petition. Actually, the Board is gonna take a five-minute break where through old business, we have four more petitions under new business. The Board is gonna take a five-minute break.
Oh, I guess we're next, but we're on break.
Is Okay, so only Board review is now in session. The next petition on the agenda is from Deborah Bailey. Is this
I'm here.
Present?
I'm here.
Okay, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Deborah Bailey, 50 Clearview, Portsmouth.
Okay, and please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Tell us what you'd like to do.
So we were in front of you guys about a year ago to put, we got approval to do a second floor in a garage at our house, and then realized after you approved everything that the garage was not designed the way we had wanted it. And so we had to revise the application to allow for the slightly different garage shape than we originally got approval for.
Yeah, when the architect, when we discussed it with the architect, we were hoping to have a twenty-five foot wide, and when he actually drew it up, he drew it up at nineteen foot six. Now, we have to do a landing.
Just let him.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name is Peter Bailey, 50 Clearview Ave. I'm Deborah's husband.
Okay, and please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth.
Yeah, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you. Okay, so that being said, please explain a little bit more about why I need this.
Okay, so originally, when we wanted to have a two-car garage, like, but nineteen feet is kind of gonna be very tight for us because the kitchen level is slightly higher than the garage. So to walk into the kitchen, I'd have to do a small landing with a set of steps walking up to it. But that's gonna take away from the width of the garage. It'll be very tight to get two cars in there, you know? So originally, I discussed with the architect to draw it up at twenty-five feet. And when we went to get a true zoning last time, we actually thought that that's what we were asking for permission for, and it was only afterwards that we realized that we had made a mistake. So that's why we're trying to get it amended, you know?
Okay, so I don't, let me just see. I don't see a copy of the original. Actually, yes, I do. Let me just take a second. Just quickly reviewing the decision.
Okay.
That was in August of 2019, is that correct?
Yes.
And Board voted unanimously to grant the petitioner an eight-foot front yard setback variance and two percent lot coverage variance. And special use permit, construct the proposed garage in addition in accordance with plans. So we're approved for an eight-foot front yard variance and a two percent lot coverage variance. So now, this evening, I'm just, I'm just trying to review the the variances that you're requesting. So now, as opposed to an eight-foot variance, you're requesting a fourteen-foot variance, is that correct?
I don't understand, to be honest, because basically the width of the garage was supposed to be twenty-five feet. That's what I was, I asked the architect to do it, to draw it up as, and he drew it up at ninety-six on the width. So that's, that's the problem. The width of the garage, I'd rather it be wider than, you know, if I have to make it not as long from front to back, but I'd rather have it wider because it's just be too tight to fit two cars in there.
Okay.
Do you have the
Do you have the two site plans? I know I sent loads of files over.
Yeah. Okay, so in regards to the lot coverage, you were approved for 2% lot coverage variance, and right now, it looks like, I guess I'm confused. This looks as though it's 34%, and you're requesting a 14% lot coverage variance?
I don't understand the percentages, honestly, so I'm not, I'm not sure how they calculate all of that. I got the guy in the town office helped me calculate the numbers, just the architect.
We'll figure it out. We'll help you walk through it.
Okay.
That's okay. So, I'm going to turn it over to, well, actually, before I turn it over to board members, I'm just going to ask, right now, you have no garage, is that correct?
Correct. We have approval to do a garage, but not the garage we wanted.
Okay, so do you have a basement?
Yes.
The basement in the house, yes.
Okay, do you have a bulkhead to get to the basement?
Yes.
Okay. All right, board members, questions?
Kevin Benfrold, they have a question for Mr. Ratazvi. Yes, Mr. Ratazvi, what was the dimensions of your original approved garage?
And.
He's asking them.
He's asking us. And the original, the original approved garage, the dimension was 19 foot 6.
19 foot 6, wide?
Wide, yes.
And then the same depth as you're asking for now?
Yeah, the same depth.
Okay, and then, and then the new garage is 20 something?
25.
So it looks like you're only increasing six feet, is that correct?
Exactly, yes. And even increasing that by six feet, it's still within 15 feet, still more than 15 feet away from the property line.
So that, that's Yeah, exactly. It's not a whole lot of lot coverage. You know, whatever, whatever was approved before, it's not increasing by.
That much exponentially, no. It's something like 6 by 40, it's like 140 square feet. Okay, board members, any other questions to the petitioner?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this two stories or just a single story?
Two-story.
Two-story.
Two full stories.
Correct.
Yeah.
That was also originally approved.
Yeah, the top floor was a bonus room.
So it's a finished space on the second floor?
No, unfinished.
Unfinished.
Just for storage, basically.
But is it accessible from the main house?
No.
Yeah.
No, it's not. It's only accessible from the garage.
Okay. Thank you.
Other board members, questions? Okay, so it appears as though we have a petition for a variance, a setback variance, as well as a lot coverage variance. And we also have special use for a substandard lot of record. So the Bayleys, I just need to ask you a few questions. The zoning ordinance has, because you're in an R20 zone, that means like residential 20,000 square feet, and your lot is 8,700, that means that your lot is substandard. So zoning ordinance, I just need to ask you a few questions. Would, if this petition were approved, would there be adequate space for fire protection to get to your backyard in case there was an emergency?
Yes.
Absolutely, because the house is on a corner also.
Okay, and is there adequate light and air between the buildings?
Can it all connect it? It's just one building.
Okay, I guess I meant between your abundant buildings.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, that was good on your part, though. Okay, if this were approved, would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect neighborhood property?
No.
No, okay. Would it create lot coverage and setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
Can you ask that one again? Sorry, I missed you.
No, that's okay. It's a tough question. Would it create lot coverage or setbacks less than the average lot coverage and setbacks of adjacent properties?
No.
Those houses off the street, they have, they have way less.
No, they have more.
No, no.
And would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or the immediate neighbors?
No.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for,
I just realized something. The mic show us this down there. This is a corner lot, so Clearview and Kenneth have a 30-foot setback on each, each of those, on each of those. There's, there's a proposed addition, correct, to the house that extends, extends towards Clearview, correct?
Um, yeah, I would, I guess it's closer to the Clearview side. It would be on the, um.
We may need to, we need a, need a second front yard variance, because it looks like existing, it's only.
22 points eight or seven?
Yeah.
22 point something, six?
22, six, yeah, that's what it's.
So that would be a 7.6?
Yeah.
Variance.
Mr. Ratazvi? Yeah. Is that different than what was in the previously approved?
I suspect the answer is, though, I only saw one. Yeah, they, they listed it as side yards on the application before.
Okay, so just to summarize, in terms of the dimensional setback variances, we have two. We have a 7 foot 6 yard front yard variance on Kenneth, and we have a 14 foot front yard variance on Clearview, is that correct?
And then there should be a side yard setback.
Of like 0.4?
Inches. Yep, of course.
Four inches. All right.
He asked this question.
He didn't.
Five inches, five inches.
Five inches?
Yeah.
All right, this is four, but you say five, okay. All right. So then the only other thing to resolve is the lot coverage, which quite honestly, I'm confused about. The original petition was approved for a 2% lot coverage variance, and now we're at 34%. I mean, really, the only thing that's changed is they added six feet to the width of the garage, which is like 240 square feet. So I'm a little suspect of the
Who, who, who?
You're not asking me.
A little suspect of the request for a lot coverage variance. I'd like to try to walk through that again. So let's try to figure it out. Now, a house that is 28 by 38, is that correct?
The house is, is that what you're saying?
Yes, the house.
Yeah, the house is, right now, the house is 22 by 38.
22 by?
Or it says 28 existing on the.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I'm confused about. Does the tax card have 28? Hmm, actually, petition from 2019. It said, let's see, like this, yeah, that has 28.
This has 20.
30.
24.
Original petition has 28 by 30. And it only has a 22% left. I just couldn't work my, putting the original petition. So I have a question. We have the original petition that was submitted to the board back in July of 2019, and it lists the house as existing at 28 by 30. So, actually, I propose additions to the house. 28 by 30 something, 33? So let's try to walk through it. What, what's the existing house right now?
Right now, 22 from front to back. Yeah, from left to right.
Okay, so the existing house right now is 22 by what?
30, 38.
38?
Yeah.
All right, so it's 22 by 38.
Yeah.
All right, I'm just going to calculate or, I got my smartphone somewhere. You, you got, you got it?
38 is 836.
Okay, so that's 836. And then, do you have a deck?
No.
Not currently.
Right now, on the, on the proposed plan, there's a, there's a porch on the front of the house.
Okay, so right now, you don't have anything. You don't have a deck right now. So the only thing that's right now is just the house, is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so in terms of what you're proposing, the, you're proposing an addition to the house?
Yeah, the addition is a second floor with the same footprint of the house, and the garage on the, on the driveway side, and it's perpendicular to the house.
Okay, so, so one more time, the garage that you're composing is?
Is, is, is perpendicular to the house.
But the dimensions, sorry, the dimensions.
Sorry, the dimension that we proposed was 25 wide by, I think it was 38 or 40 long.
Yeah, 38, okay, so that's 967. All right, so 967. Then you're proposing to add a deck?
A front.
A front porch.
A porch, okay.
Yeah.
And is that 308, that 38 by 10?
Yeah, 38 by 9.
38 by 9.
Yeah, that's what's on the plan.
All right, so 38 by 9.
Yeah.
But 38 times 9. Uh.
342.
342? Okay, so that being said, you've got existing of 836, and you're going to add a garage of 967 and a deck of 342. So where does that add?
12.
I guess, okay, we're going to do that here. 836, 342, 967.
This is on tax card. The layout.
Okay.
And the house, I don't think that's the, that's the tax card thing, but I bet the 912 doesn't move the stairs or.
Right, okay.
So it's 912. 45.
Okay. Stairs. Yeah. Okay. Right, yeah, right, okay. So what is that?
Plus 342 plus 9.
Correct.
2145.
2145. And then you have some exterior stairs, so we'll say that's like 3 by 5?
Probably, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that sounds about right, they're little.
Okay, so 2145, we'll add 15 feet stairs. So that's 21
60.
60 divided by 8700.
That was.
160 divided by 8700.
Point 248.
48, all right, so that makes sense. All right, that's a little closer. So we're going to say that your lot coverage, the proposed lot coverage is 24.8%. So you're seeking a 4.8% lot coverage variance. Okay, are there any other questions for board members before we ask for our butters? No? So are there butters or interested parties that wish to speak? Thank you.
Do you raise your hand now if you have any comments? Take your, your comments. It's not.
Okay, that being said, the boards are ready to vote. The petitioners, the Bayleys are seeking relief for the purposes of constructing a garage, a dimensional variance relief of a 7 foot 6 inch front yard setback variance on this end of the street, and a 14 foot front yard variance on Clearview, as well as a 5 inch side yard variance. In addition, the petitioner is seeking special use permit approval for a substandard lot of record, as well as a 4.8% lot coverage variance.
Mr. Ratazvi? I want to approve the dimensional variance and the special use. That again has been approved in the past and is now seeking to enlarge their, their garage by approximately a third, 6 feet wide, used to be 19. That, that increase in width was an oversight of the original design, and it's reasonable, given the desire to have a two-car garage with the entrance step that's required because of the craving of.
What happened there?
I think someone should mute them.
Yeah.
Oh my.
Bear with us while we get through some technical difficulty as the say goes.
Oh my, that sounded scary, whatever that was. Okay, sorry, continue whenever you're ready.
We may, we may have to log off of Zoom right now and then log back on. And I apologize, it seems like yours kind of froze up here.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, so
So we're gonna, we're gonna stop the meeting and then get right back up in about two minutes.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, please bear with us while we log out and then log right back in.
Okay.